Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees. It is now 7:03 PM. I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. As customary, we will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Keisha Mays in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And at this time, if I could have everyone please silence your cellphones and any electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you during the meeting. And now also, if you would join me in a moment of silence. The first item on our agenda is program or presentation, the first of which is on our Student Leadership Advisory Board introduction. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. It is my honor to take this opportunity to allow our SLAB students to introduce themselves. Before they do that, I just want to say how happy we are that this program has started. And for those that don't know, we have students from our six traditional high schools that get to represent not only their school, but all of their peers within their school, give input to the trustees for different things that they see going on in their school. And what I think is so exciting is although we're all in Arlington, they get an opportunity to visit the other schools. And the insight that they learn from the other schools is so important, and I love hearing them talk about it. But this isn't about me, this is about them. So I'm going to introduce our president for the SLAB, and then I'm going to allow each student to introduce themselves. So first, our president this year for our SLAB students is Noelle Vargas Kidos from Bowie High School. If you'll please come introduce yourself, and then we can follow.
Good afternoon. My name is Noelle Vargas, as she already told everyone. I'd just like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be a second-year member of this board. My first year as a member was truly an inspiring experience, even so to the point where I'm considering going into public service. And I truly appreciate you for the opportunity you've given me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Torres, and I go to Arlington Collegiate High School. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, and hopefully I'll be able to come back next year as the president. Thank you.
Hold on.
Wow, the standard has been set, fellow SLAB members.
Thaddeus, hold on, I'm sorry, hold on. And if you don't mind saying which trustee that you've been partnered with as well. Thanks, Thaddeus.
Yeah, I've been partnered with Ms. Keisha Mays.
That's why she's jockeying for president. I see what you're saying.
So, good afternoon. My name is Thaddeus, I go by Thad. I represent Sam Houston High School. I've been partnered with Ms. Polly Walton, and I'm really thankful for the opportunity you've all given me. So, I'll be, I'll make sure to take full advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Nguyen. I represent James Bowie High School, and my partner is Bowie-Hog.
Wow, hard to go after that. I'm Tatum Baffa, and I'm the junior class president at Martin High School, and my partner is Ms. Jamie Solins, and I'm looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Julia Almraz. I go to Arlington High School, and I'm partnered with John Hibbs, who is unfortunately not here today. And I just want to say I'm very honored to serve this year on the SLAB board.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Crawford. I represent Lamar High School, and I, my representative is Ms. Kristen Hudson, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you to each of you for introducing yourselves. Also, if I could just ask, Michelle Wilmouth, do you mind? Thank you. If you could just come up and just say a few words. First of all, on behalf of the trustees and myself, we want to thank you for overseeing this awesome group of leaders that are already here. Gretchen, thank you so much for your assistance as well. So, Michelle, please say a few words.
I'm happy to. Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, you know, when you enacted the first strategic plan back in 2012, and you conceived of the idea of a Student Leadership Advisory Board, at its heart was a need that you saw for more student voice. And so I commend you for that and for the continuation of it. And so I look forward to working with the group and looking for additional opportunities, not only for them to give you their voice, but also for them to expand their considerable leadership skills. These guys are already leaders in their own right, and I'm looking forward to great things from this group. I also just wanted to add that the representative from Sagan was not able to be here tonight. And so her name is Dina Hanan, and she is paired with Dr. Reich. So, we want to give her a hand in absentia, because I know she'll be adding a lot of value to this group as well. Thank you, Ms. Wilmouth. Thank you, Dr. Reich.
Thank you. And we're really looking forward to working with all of you collectively as a group and individually as mentor-mentee relationships, and that goes both ways as mentor-mentee. So, thank you very much. Next, we'll move on in our agenda to Item B, Community and Student Engagement Self-Evaluation Report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we'd like to bring the self-evaluation report led by Dr. Barlow, and he's going to present this information tonight. Dr. Barlow.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for having a few minutes for me to share these data with you. So, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the Community and Student Engagement Self-Evaluation Project, or Self-Evaluation Report. And this actually started a few years back with House Bill 5. There's nine components to it, so I'm going to go through a little bit of a summary slide as far as what the components are, and then we'll just kind of scan through the data as we go through the rest of the slides. But the criteria evaluation and ratings are set by the district-wide committee of stakeholders. Ratings apply to all criteria, eight components, and overall, you have exemplary recognized, acceptable, unacceptable, and not applicable. So each one of the components would have one of those ratings that go with it. All campuses within the same school level have the same criteria, so that would be like elementary would use the same criteria, junior high, high school, and so forth. And then you must have documentation supporting the rating. So even though that it's determined by the district and determined by the community or local stakeholders, you still need to maintain some documentation on how you came up with the rating. So each district could actually have different ratings or different criteria for each of the ratings as you go through the process, but you need to maintain some documentation, post it on the website, and so forth. Results are reported to the board, ratings and compliance status posted to the district website in a public hearing by August 7th, so that's basically what we're doing right here. And then TEA must report the ratings and compliance status on TEA website no later than October 1st. And so we basically report those data through our PMS process, and so every district in the state would have data reported to the TEA, and then they would post it on their website so that anybody could go out and take a look at it. So we'll go ahead and get started with just the data slides here, and you can see that all these are going to be formatted in the same way. Basically, what would change is the top with respect to the indicator. So if I'm using the slide right here, like Fine Arts is at the top, that would be the first indicator. You can see the schools off here to the left, elementary, junior high, high school, and the district. And then you can see the counts in each one of those. And so like, I'll use this as the example, Fine Arts. Exemplary, we had 33 elementaries, nine junior highs, six high schools, recognized 15 elementaries, one junior high, acceptable seven elementaries. And we had some over here that were not applicable. You'll also see here that there's an X for the district, and so the district won't necessarily have a number there, it'll just have an X with respect to which category or which rating we fell into with respect to the district. So, maybe just as a couple of examples, when we go through the process of rating or setting those criteria, some of the examples for Fine Arts might be is how many after-school Fine Arts programs were provided by the campus, how many opportunities for performances and exhibitions were offered by the campus, and so forth. So each one of these criteria or categories will have some similar question like that that would be asked with respect to the campus in collecting those data. So we'll go through the rest of the slides pretty quickly. We won't spend a lot of time unless you have questions. The next area here is wellness and physical education. You can see there again, the dominance here in exemplary categories here, 42, 7, and 7 with respect to the elementary, junior high, and high school. The district rating there is exemplary, and then you can see some of the other areas. We did have a few campuses in the other areas. Community and parent involvement, again, several exemplars. This one, we did have probably more in the recognized criteria. We also put the district in there since we had a dominance there in the recognized area, but you can see that pretty much everybody, all the campuses in the district fell in one of those two areas, the exemplary or the recognized. 21st century workforce development, again, dominating there in the exemplary area. In fact, I think most of these, if not all, except that one on the previous slide, were pretty much dominated by the exemplary area. You can see 32 elementaries, 10 junior highs, four high schools, and so forth. Second, language acquisition, again, 55 exemplary there in elementary, nine junior high, eight high school. The district we had is exemplary as well. And you can just see we had one at each campus level there in the recognized, and none of the other categories there. Digital learning environment, again, you can see the data there. I'm not going to go through each one of the numbers each time, but what I may do is give you just a few more examples of some of the criteria used, not on that one, but I've got a couple of other examples here that I'll go through when we get to a couple of the other slides here. So, dropout prevention strategies, there, again, you've got the exemplary dominated there, 48 elementaries, 10 junior highs, three high schools. So one of the questions that might be asked there when we're surveying the campus is how many intervention programs did you have this year to address academic behavior and socially-emotional needs of your students? And so depending on how many they reported and what our criteria was for that category, then we'd put them in one of those criteria, exemplary or recognized, and so forth. Educational programs for gifted and talented students, again, there you can see the numbers. A couple of the questions that we may ask there with respect to the campuses is how often did your campus have an in-school program for GT students? How often did your campus have an outside-of-school-day program for your GT students? So depending on what they answered in our criteria that we set there, we determine what their rating was. And then the compliance and policy reporting, we all fell into the yes for that particular category. Basically, that's if you do your SIP and your DIP, turn in your school report cards and so forth, which all those are compliance issues. It's just make sure that all campuses in the district are under compliance. And then with all of those data, kind of come up with where the dominant areas are with respect to each one of the campuses. And you can see here's kind of the overall rating, so we had all those categories, and you have the overall rating. Again, most of them in the exemplary category, rating 37 elementaries, 10 junior highs, three high schools. We have the district there in the overall rating of exemplary as well, and you can see some over in the recognized area, but none in the acceptable or unacceptable area. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Hog.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Thank you, Dr. Barlow. It's good information. One thing I'd ask for a request is, can you send us trend data of what this has done each year to make sure we're progressing each year?
Sure. Sure. We actually have a slide that has a few years on it. I can bring that up.
Yeah.
Thought that might be a question.
Thought you would. There we go.
So, here you can see, we have 15, 16, and 17 on each one of these, exemplary, recognized, and acceptable. So I'll just do an example here with the elementary. We went from 39 to 48 to 37, so a little bit of variation there. Same pretty steady here in the recognized area, 13, 7, and 19, but you can see the data there from year to year for each one of those areas and levels.
Thanks. And make sure you send that to us afterwards so we can review that. And let me ask the other question, because these numbers are fine, but we're always going to, we always must be making progress. Do these go into principals' campus plans and campuses' campus plans?
They have indicators in there where they're addressing at least one or part of those criteria as they go along the way. They may not address each one of them individually, but they do have information in there where they're addressing those.
And tell me how, like, you know, on some of these, I know the NA is what they are, you know, elementary dropout, I'm assuming that's KUKAN, that we're probably not tracking pre-K strictly building.
Sure. So if you're talking about dropout, that maybe the NA's might have been like the KUKAN, or if you have like a Fine Arts, it might have been Adventure or something like that.
And then let me ask, you know, is this board and this district, we've made lots of investments in our gifted and talented, so how would we have a couple of gifted and talented's not reaching at least the recognized or exemplary level at the elementary level?
So I think it's against the number of programs that they have in those particular areas, and so we could go back and count up those programs. I can identify more specific, with more, a greater specificity as far as which ones and why they fell that. I don't have that off the top of my head, but we could identify that.
And so as we review campus plans and look at those, is this, that's where I'm asking, is that kind of information being tracked directly in that campus plan?
I'm sure some campuses are. The campuses have a little bit of latitude, but certainly that's something that we can emphasize. We're about to go through that process with campuses here in July, and so we can certainly emphasize that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hog. Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Reich. A quick question on the number of high schools. Sometimes it's seven, sometimes it's nine. I assume that Venture and Turning Point are the other two in addition, and then there would be one more.
The newcomer, Turning Point, Venture, those, you know, depending on the programs that they have and so forth, sometimes it varies a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess a little bit confusing.
Thank you for clarifying.
I don't see any other lights indicating questions. I have a comment and a question. First off, the comment is, great job in what you do and what your department does in analyzing this huge amount of data.
Sure, thank you.
And boiling it down to where it's in digestible bites for us as trustees, as well as the rest of the district. And kudos to the district on just tremendous efforts in meeting these accountability standards that are ever-changing. It seems to be a moving target, and I know in the details of that, there are different thresholds for the different indicators. So with that, that's leading into my question, which is, we just came through a legislative session, we have things that are changing, so will it look like this next year, or what can we expect to be visualizing as far as metrics?
That is a great question. So this particular indicator was actually supposed to go into the accountability process for next year. House Bill 22 actually took that out, and so it will not count as an accountability indicator with respect to our district campus accountability ratings. So what I would expect is that as we go through the year, we'll do something very similar to what we have right here, because House Bill 5 is still in play. It's not that House Bill 5 or this particular process is going away. It's just that in this next year, that we're supposed to actually include this in the accountability process, so that just won't happen. So I would expect that when we get to this time next year, we'll be using a similar process as what we did right now.
Okay. All right. Very good. I don't see any other lights indicating questions, so thank you.
Absolutely. You bet. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next on our agenda is recognition of recent Board President Jamie Solins. Now, Ms. Solins, we, for those of you that did not see, two weeks ago, well, just less than two weeks ago, we all took a moment of personal privilege and spoke and maybe embarrassed Mrs. Solins. But we did not have our official award to present to her, and that has now arrived. And I would like to present that to you. It would be my honor to present it to you. I just want to say just a couple of brief words, starting out with 1,000,000, a number, That is the two years of service translated into minutes, as we are so familiar with in our district, as far as minutes, of your service, your tireless service. And although that is 24/7, I know that it really meant almost 24/7 for you as our leader. I so appreciate that. Your leadership in those two years, or that 1,051,200 minutes, has touched a lot of major, major lifting and accomplishments in our district. What we have now in our strategic plan is, under your leadership, the design, the development, the implementation, many, many, many months of hard work and tireless efforts with your lead, is what we have now as a strategic plan. We have a budget discussion tonight, but you have overseen two previous budgets that have had challenges as well as opportunities to continue to push the envelope for student achievement. And if I can't preface anything more, your leadership has always been with the betterment of our students and the achievement potential of our students at heart, and you have always led with that as the beginning of leading out in anything. Just a couple of other quick things here. You have overseen, of course, our board-appointed committees of Financial Futures Committees, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, the development and the first appointment of our Student Health Advisory Council, which is very significant. You've overseen and endured six major policy updates through the ARTASP updates, which, for those of you that don't know policy, it's a lot of work and kind of dry at times, but very important, because it's one of the main things we do here as trustees. With our bond implementation, you have worked with and overseen so much, including the Peach and McNutt Elementary School openings, the programming work related to the Career Tech Center, the Ag Science Center, the Performing Arts Center, the athletics complex, the MACs on every single high school campus, Sam Houston programming and planning and expansion, Corey Academy, Jones Academy, including namesake designations. There's just so many things. Along with that bond implementation, those new elementary schools is overseeing and being responsible to the boundary line redrawings and changes. And to be at the helm for that process is no small undertaking, as well as, again, with the focus on student achievement, the working with and setting district goals, surveys, the scorecards, the campus improvement plans. The, our audit process, internal and external. Over 1,000,000 minutes adds up to a lot of things, and this is not an inclusive list. And I guess that the final thing would be the legislative advocacy at the federal and the state level, including our just recent 85th legislative session. You have led with inspiration and empowerment, not only for this board, but I believe I can speak for our superintendent, for his staff, for the teachers out there, for the parents, the community members. You are a force, and we just love you as our leader. And with that, you will get some kind of a plaque or something we're going to give you. So, with that segue, would you like to say any words before we go down and present the plaque?
You're making me tired. No, as we all know, the work of this district is a team effort, and it starts in the classroom, and that's the single most important place, and it's just been an honor to serve those who work and grow and learn in the classroom, and may we have the best possible environment for that. It's been an honor to work with each of you as Board President, and not done yet, so let's keep going, so.
Very good. Well, if you would join us down front, please. And as she is approaching, I will just read this. It's a gavel, and it says, Jamie Solins, Arlington ISD Board of Trustees, President, 2015-2017, in recognition of your outstanding service and commitment to the children, the families, and staff of AISD. With that, I present this to you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we move next to our appointments. First up, we have the ratification of administrative appointments. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Reich, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for principal of Swift Elementary and assistant principal for Lamar High School, and appoint the individual discussed in closed session for principal of McNutt Elementary.
I move approval. Second?
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Walton, a second by Ms. Solins. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And there we go. Should I wait just a little longer? Yours is, hold yours down. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Mr. Hibbs is away on business this evening. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Reich, and I'd like to introduce the new principal for McNutt Elementary, Ms. Ginger Cole-Luffel. Ginger attended the University of Texas to receive her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, University of Texas at Arlington for a Master of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently, the director at Uplift Education School, has been a secondary ESL strategist in Grand Prairie, has been a teacher at our newcomer center here in Arlington, and a teacher in Houston for Teach for America. Ginger, congratulations.
Good evening, President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for the honor of being appointed as principal of McNutt Elementary. I'm excited about supporting once again Arlington ISD in the same neighborhood where I was a teacher just a few years ago. Joining and supporting me tonight are my husband, Donnie, and my girls Serena and Delaney. I think the baby might actually be in the hallway. And I also want to thank my mentors at home who guided me and who I met here in Arlington ISD, Bonnie Jones Wilborn and Mark Strand. Thank you for your wisdom and guidance. And finally, to the McNutt Elementary staff, families, Ms. Tracy Brown and Ms. Sandy McNutt. I've enjoyed hearing the stories about the journey and successes you've experienced this first year, and I look forward to being a part of the team as we reach toward realizing a grand vision for our students, families, and staff together. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the principal for Swift Elementary, Ms. Bailey Morris.
Bailey attended the University of Central Florida to receive her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Ed, UT Arlington for a Master of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently, the assistant principal at Marymore Elementary, has also been a third-grade teacher in Mansfield, a kindergarten and third-grade teacher in Burleson. Bailey, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. It is truly an honor and a privilege to continue to serve the students, the families, the staff, and the community that is Arlington ISD. It's an incredible place, and I'm so thankful to be a part. My wonderful husband is here to support me tonight. He is my rock, and I am so thankful for him and his constant encouragement and always being there by my side. My fantastic parents have traveled from Florida to also be here with us this evening, and so I'm very thankful for them. They have made me the woman I am today, and I cannot begin to thank them enough. To the wonderful people in my past that have led me to this point, to Tammy Vardy, who encouraged me to pursue administration, to Dr. Beal for giving me that opportunity to be her assistant principal and for being such a wonderful mentor and guide to me starting out, to Wileyne George, who continued to help and support me in that role as I continued to grow, and getting to work with Tyson has been absolutely amazing. Tyson Jones has been a wonderful- Tyson Jones has been a wonderful mentor and friend, and I look forward to continuing to work with him. There are numerous Assistant Principals and Principals in this district that I can say because it really is a village, and every one of them has played a part. To my amazing Marymore family, I love you. I'm moving down the street, but our family's just getting a little bigger. We're not saying goodbye because Arlington has a wonderful partnership between their schools, and I look forward to continuing to partnership. And to my amazing new family, the incredible Swift Elementary. I've had the privilege of getting to meet several of them and be on campus lately and see them already in action at summer school, and they are an incredible staff with a wonderful vision that puts kids first, that works collaboratively together, and I cannot wait to be a part of that and to continue that with them. So thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity to be part of Arlington ISD.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Lamar High School, Ms. Sarah El Sharif. Sarah attended the University of Texas at Arlington for her Bachelor of Science in Biology, UT Arlington for her Master of Business Administration, and SMU for her Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, a biology teacher in anatomy and physiology, health, small animal management teacher in Keene ISD. Sarah, welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you, President Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to stand before you tonight. I'm incredibly excited to be back in Arlington and especially excited to be a Viking once again. I'd like to thank Mr. Hagman for the opportunity to serve as Assistant Principal. I'm thrilled to work with the leadership team, teachers, the students, and staff at Lamar and to continue Lamar's tradition of excellence. I'd also like to thank my Keene family for helping me grow professionally and teaching me how important a positive school culture is to the lives of our students. I'd especially like to thank Mrs. Denning, Mr. Conley, Mrs. Bailey, Brooke, and Kim for their support and encouragement throughout my time at Keene. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my parents, Sahar and Sammy, and sisters, Noor and Hanin, for always being there for me and being my cheerleaders. I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for their love and support. Thank you all for this wonderful opportunity, and I'm honored to give back to my community and serve Arlington ISD.
Thank you all. Very exciting. As is our custom, we ask that each of you follow Mr. Cale to the lobby for a receiving line so that we can each meet you and welcome you. For the audience, if you wouldn't mind, please let the board go first. We would really appreciate that so that we can come back and, after a brief break, and continue our business. We'll take a 7:36 now, a 10-minute break, and we'll come back. Seven minutes. All right, call this meeting back to order. Next on our agenda is a public hearing considering the 2017-18 budget and proposed tax rate, including possible compensation increases. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. And Cindy, would you like to make any comments about the public hearing? And then, Dr. Rice, you can ask for anybody who wants to speak on it.
President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos, we are required by law to hold a public hearing on our budget and proposed tax rate each year, and so this is the time at which we will do that and give individuals an opportunity to speak on the budget and the proposed tax rate. As we've explained several times before, we will not actually vote on a tax rate tonight. We will do that in August after we get our certified property values. So tonight, we're going to have another conversation about the budget, and the board can potentially decide to adopt the budget this evening, but the tax rate itself will wait until August.
Very good. Let's see, regarding the public hearing, I do have one card from Mr. Stephen Poole regarding the budget. So please come on down, Mr. Poole.
So I didn't hear any instructions, Dr. Rice, so I have unlimited time, and I get to badmouth Dr. Cavassos, too, right? I think Christmas just came early.
So I, just because you said that, I will go ahead and make sure you understand that this segment allows for you to share your views, not address any derogatory comments towards any individual, not be tolerated. You will have, I believe, five minutes to speak, although I don't see the... Is it down there? I don't see it from here. It is there? Okay. So, Mr. Poole, you know what to do, and you've been informed.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Rice, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'm Stephen Poole, the Executive Director of UEA, and tonight I wanted to come say thank you for all of your hard work on the budget this year. For anyone who thinks that you just show up to school board meetings every other Thursday for a couple of hours, they're sadly mistaken. We know the hard work that goes into the budget, and especially this year with the unknown coming from our so-called leaders out of Austin, our Texas Legislature and Governor. We were under the impression, because a district judge had ruled twice that this state funding for public schools was unconstitutional, until the Texas Supreme Court ripped that out from underneath us and said it's constitutional but dysfunctional. So Legislature, you do something. But we saw what happened. They did nothing. Social issues and vouchers got in the way of passing any real meaningful funding for public schools. So here we are, left with the same amount of money coming from the state as we had two years ago, and it's woefully underfunded from what it should be. So we understand where you were in a tough situation trying to develop a budget for this year, but we also know that all school districts are not created equal. Different school districts get different funding per student, depending on what school district you are. Just here locally, Fort Worth ISD receives $300 more per student than Arlington. In Kennedale, even though they did pass a TRE, receives $1,000 more per student. Just think of that. With 62,000 students here in Arlington, you would have $62 million more per year if you had the same funding levels as Kennedale ISD. So we thank you, and I especially want to say thank you to Mr. Hibbs and his work and the Finance Committee's work on developing this budget. We know it was difficult. Anyone who knows me and my 17 years with UEA, I am an unabashed proponent of teachers and public school educators. No educator should be ashamed of coming forward and advocating for competitive salaries. When you enter the classroom, you don't take a vow of poverty. They're professionals. They should be paid as professionals. Other school districts around are giving two, two and a half, maybe on the rare instance three, but they're trying to play catch-up. The 2.25% raise that you're proposing and have talked about in the past will be a competitive raise for this year in this area. But UEA is especially pleased to hear that you're looking at addressing the disparity in your teachers with nine to 17 years. That's evident in your own comparisons and the salary comparison that we provide. It is a big dollar amount attached to address that, and it may not be able to be done in one fell swoop. But as long as you show your commitment to your teachers and your employees that you are going to do right by them and do your very best that you can for them this year, they will understand the financial handcuffs Austin has placed you in and the restraints that you are operating under. More than anything, they just want to hear that they're valued and that they're important to every single one of you. I've met with every single one of you through this budget process to talk about employee raises and other issues important to the district. You have a lot of great things going on. Even with declining enrollment, you're adding programs and adding initiatives to bring those students back to Arlington. And you can look at the Career Tech Center and the Future Fine Arts Center as reasons. That takes money. But at the same time, your employees are also one of the driving reasons why people remain in Arlington ISD, whether it's the bus driver or the cafeteria workers, the teachers in the classroom, and the administrators in the building, and maybe even this building, too. So thank you for everything that you do, and don't want you to think it doesn't go unnoticed, and we look forward to hearing your discussion on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. As this is a public hearing, is there anyone else who would like to address the board regarding the 2017-18 budget or proposed tax rate, including possible compensation Seeing none, then the public hearing on the 2017-18 budget and proposed tax rate, including possible compensation increases, is now closed. Okay, next, we move on to our open forum for agenda items. I have no cards tonight, so we will move directly to our action. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice, and at this time, we'd like for the board to consider approving a resolution authorizing participation in an interlocal agreement and delegation of parameter authority to the superintendent or CFO for the procurement of electricity
Thank you. Is there a motion on the consideration of the approval of the resolution?
Thank you, Dr. Rice.
I'll just read this, yes?
Okay. Whereas Senate Bill 7 enacted by the 76th Texas Legislature restructures electric power within the state of Texas, and whereas Section 304.001 of the Local Government Code authorizes political subdivisions to join together to form a political subdivision corporation to negotiate the purchase of electricity or to aid or act on behalf of the political subdivisions for which the corporation is created with respect to their own electricity use for their respective public facilities, and whereas Texas Public Energy Alliance has been formed as a political subdivision corporation, and whereas the political subdivision wishes to obtain electricity for its public facilities at the lowest cost providing the best value, thereby benefiting its citizens and taxpayers, and now therefore be it resolved by the political subdivision's governing body that the political subdivision, Arlington Independent School District, agrees to join other participating political subdivisions and participate in the corporation. The political subdivision hereby approves the Texas Public Energy Alliance certification of formation attached as Exhibit A, the bylaws, attached as Exhibit B, and the interlocal participation agreement attached as Exhibit C. The political subdivision agrees to cooperate with the corporation in providing data related to electricity demand for its accounts and other information that may assist in preparing bid solicitations or request for proposals. By approving this resolution, the political subdivision does not create an obligation for the political subdivision, nor does it authorize the corporation to actually purchase electricity on its behalf without the political subdivision's prior consent to specific purchases. The political subdivision understands that prior to authorizing the purchase of electricity through contracts negotiated by the corporation, information detailing procurement terms will be provided. The political subdivision may then purchase electricity through contracts negotiated by the corporation on its behalf by issuing an order, resolution, purchase order, or other binding agreement under terms that are materially the same as the terms the corporation originally described in the information presented to the political subdivision. The political subdivision agrees to allow the corporation to use its name as a participant in descriptions of the corporation.
And do you read that in the form of a motion, Ms. Hudson?
I move to approve. Yes.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hudson, second by Ms. Maes, for the consideration to approve the resolution authorizing participation in the interlocal agreement and delegation of parameter authority to superintendent and chief financial officer for procurement of electricity services. Any discussion? Please, oh, Mr. Hogg.
Yeah, real quick, Dr. Rice. Ms. Hudson, could you repeat the motion? I'm kidding, I really don't. I'm totally kidding. I just want to commend our CFO and our superintendent for this. This is buying energy in the futures. Prices right now of electricity are very low. We've done it in the past, and it's been very lucrative to us in looking at that, and this is truly for almost the year 2020 is what we're looking to buy is a good thing. And these type of measures have helped this district for many years, saved lots of money because beyond salary and insurance and those things, our next biggest cost is electricity. So this is a major item in this budget that we're pinching every single year. So I commend our staff for being very aggressive on this and the board taking, I wouldn't say it's a risk, but taking the opportunity to be able to buy energy in the future as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Well-stated. Seeing no other lights, please vote. All trustees in attendance vote in the affirmative. Moving on, now to discussion action. First item, A, consider adoption of the 2017-18 fiscal year budget, including possible compensation increases. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening, we bring for your consideration our 1718 budget, and we've had a number of meetings. The Finance Committee has also met, has brought back information from previous board meetings, and tonight we'd like to present the final kind of presentation and ask for your consideration, Ms. Powell.
Good evening, President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos. All right, we have had two discussions already in the month of June on our budget. On June 8th, we presented the preliminary budget strictly for the general fund. The board talked about it, about staffing needs, and about compensation. We came back on June 13th, and we had some additional conversation mainly around compensation topics. We also presented the budgets for, the preliminary budgets for the funds other than the general fund. So this evening, we've already held a public hearing. We had one speaker on that to discuss the proposed budget and tax rate, and so we're going to bring back some summary information to you that is based off of what we heard at the last meeting, and then, as Dr. Cavassos said, ask for your consideration for the budget. So at our meeting on June 13th, the board approved new positions, and so we have taken that information, that directive, and we have built the dollars for those positions into the proposed budget that we are bringing you this evening. For the general fund, that's 22 positions that total $1,162,000, and for food service, that is two positions that total $61,000. We also had some discussion at our last meeting about the upcoming special session. The governor has called a special session, and it begins July 18th. One of the items that he has indicated will be on the agenda is a $1,000 raise for teachers. I will point out that there has yet to be a proclamation issued for the special session, and so until a proclamation is issued, legislators cannot file bills for the special session. So there's been no bill filed on anything that they intend to address in the special session. So we have been working to get additional information, as much information as we can, on the topic of a raise. What we do know from what the governor has said is that it appears there will be no additional state funding appropriated to school districts to cover the cost of the raise, so it would be essentially an unfunded mandate. There have been years in the past where the legislature has approved a raise for teachers or for... or for a group of educators that includes teachers, counselors, librarians, nurses, and speech paths, and the state would fund those. And then the state would require that that raise be given on top of whatever a district does locally. Well, that's something that we and most of the districts that we speak with wanted to be rather cautious about, is to make sure that, that we would not be adopting a budget now where, and then we would come back in August and find that the legislature has passed something that requires us to give $1,000 on top of what we've already done. The information we are receiving from various sources indicates several things. Number one, that, that it very well may be that this mandated raise does not even take effect in the 1718 year. It may be mandated for the 1819 year. The state adopts a two-year budget, so this will be the second year of their biennium. Also, what we hear is that it's likely that this would not be on top of what districts choose to do locally. We're also hearing that this may be tied to teacher performance in some way. There seems to be a desire to do that. And we've also hear very strongly that the House, and in particular, the Chair of the House Public Ed Committee, is going to be very reluctant to take this up if there is no new state funding attached to it. So at, at our last meeting, following our discussion on compensation, we were given, staff was given direction on several models to bring back to you all for consideration this evening. We were asked to bring back models that included a 2.25% pay increase, and we were asked to bring back models that looked at a couple of different levels of equity adjustments for teachers who have between eight and 18 years of experience. Because in that range of experience, when you compare our salaries to the median of our comparison districts, we lag there a little bit. For the years up to year eight, we are above the median. For the years above 18, we are above the median. But in that, that middle group, we do tend to lag just, just a bit. So we were asked to, to model what it would look like if we tried to make some progress at closing that gap, but not necessarily close it all the way in, in one fell swoop. So we were asked to look at what would it take to try to close the gap by approximately one-half, and what would it take to try to close that gap by approximately one-third? And so we have done that this evening. There was also some discussion about also bringing back models that included health insurance. And then earlier in the week, we were told that, well, I think the, the board members who had requested that had heard from teachers that, no, they'd rather have that money in compensation, and so that board member withdrew that request. So for anyone who's listening, who heard discussions about health insurance, that's why we're not bringing back anything that shows an increase in health insurance this evening. So you're going to see two columns on the next slide, two options. The first one includes a 2.25% raise, and it includes the cost to increase or to give equity adjustments for teachers in those middle years, eight to 18, to attempt to close that gap by a third. The cost of that is a little over eight and a half million dollars. If, option two then is very similar, a 2.25% raise and with equity adjustments for teachers in that same range to attempt to close that gap by roughly a half. So that would cost a little bit more, 8.6 million dollars. This is what that looks like, and this again is very summarized. And so if we, if you look in each column, and you look at the line in the middle of the slide that says operating surplus and deficit, you can see that with Model 1, which again would be the 2.25% raise and an equity adjustment to close the gap by approximately a third, that would give us an operating deficit of 18.5 million dollars. With option two, with the 2.25% raise and equity adjustments to close the gap by approximately a half, we would end with an operating deficit of 18 point, almost 18.7 million dollars. In both cases, then, the line below that shows that we again will spend the dollars that had been committed about a year and a half ago by the board for the ninth grade consider, center at Sam Houston. So that takes 10.7 million dollars one-time expenditure out of surplus fund balance. And so the bottom line deficit would be 29.3 million dollars under option one and 29.4 million dollars under option two. Couple of points about the teacher equity adjustments. Again, we built these equity adjustments into these two different models, and there was some conversation among the board members at the last meeting about possibly considering how we can work to close that gap over the next three years. And so just again to point out that we look at that, how we compare to our market median every year, and the change, the variance from median will change from year to year depending on what we do with compensation and with what these other districts do. And so if we give a raise this year that happens to be a little higher than the districts around us, and we give equity adjustments there, we would expect to see that gap close. You know, in one of our earlier meetings, we discussed the fact that we've talked to districts around us, and the ones that we're talking to are all indicating to us that they're looking at 2% raises. So, you know, if, if everybody does that, then we're going to close that gap a little bit. If other districts decide to do something different, or if they give equity adjustments on top of those 2% raises, then we may see that we're at about the same place. So that's just something that we'll consider and we'll look at next year and every year is to see where we are compared to that median. So the proposed teacher salary range would have a starting salary of $52,500 with the max at $73,000. On the other funds, the food service fund likewise has payroll costs in it, and so again, as directed by the board, we added the cost of two positions, two managers, to the budget to bring back to you this evening. And we've also built in here the cost of a 2.25% raise, and that is $258,000. And so if the budget is adopted like this, then we would end the year with an operating surplus in this fund of $136,973. The other funds have not changed from what we brought you previously. There's no salaries in any of these budgets, and so the budgets look just like they did previously. The natural gas fund, the debt service fund, and the construction fund. And I'll point out again, the, on the, the construction fund, which is capital projects, that's, we're using money from bonds to construct projects. And so we have sold bonds, and we have in fund balance to start this year, $256 million. We are selling bonds again. The board approved that at the last meeting, and so we will be actually closing on that sale in July. So that deficits that you see there, it's just the fact that we are taking money, cash that we already have from previous bond sales out to complete these projects that are underway. The tax rate, as I mentioned a minute ago at the start of the hearing, we will not actually adopt a tax rate tonight. We will do that in August, but the slide that we're showing right now shows the estimated tax rate for the year. Our property values, we are projecting that they will be up right at 8% based on the May preliminary values that we've received from Tarrant Appraisal District. If that is the case, then we anticipate that we will be able to lower the debt service tax rate. There are two parts to our tax rate, the maintenance and operations rate that funds the general fund, and then the debt service rate that pays for the principal and interest on our bond payments. So we anticipate that if rates or values go up, as, as it appears they will, that we'll be able to lower our debt service rate by about a penny and a half. So we'll be bringing this back to you all in August for a vote. So our recommendations this evening are that, that the board have discussion about these models that we've presented, and the board adopt the particular model that you find to be your preference for both the general fund. And then on the other funds, again, there's only one version that's being presented for your consideration this evening. We certainly can do something else with it, but what we're recommending this evening is that you adopt those as presented. The board is required to adopt budgets at the functional level, and so you have received a small budget packet that has these budgets in them in a side-by-side columnar format at the functional level. And so when we get to that point in just a minute, I can pull an image of that up as well for us to, to look at. So with that, we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Any trustees with questions? Questions, motion, whatever the board pleases. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. I, I will just say that I am so pleased that we have been able to show our appreciation for our teachers and our other employees with this compensation packet, this package that we have tonight, and still maintain our budget without too many problems down the road. It's a little risky, but it is every year, and we just are counting on our wonderful finance folks to keep working your magic that you do and always do well as far as keeping our expenditures low, and our projections may be a little high. I hope I said that right. But again, it's a, I think this is a, a real good idea. I do favor the Plan 2 where we go ahead and take care of half of the equity adjustment this year, so. If we need a motion, I will be, or do you want to discuss?
Well, there's a other light, so let's, let's wait.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. So I agree. I think our, our option tonight, and I think the best one for this board, is a 2.25% salary increase. As we discussed, discussion was coming in of 2% or insurance. I think the 2.25 is the right way instead of the insurance contribution, which I think is the right option. I think the 50% is a, a needed equity adjustment, and I will be fully supporting that. Ms. Powell, let me ask a question also. Our, our increase, what was the teachers' increase that they're required to pay to TRS, TRS Care this year?
TRS Care?
Not active.
Um, I know what our...
Or the state, wait, the state contribution went up from like 1.25 to, what did it go to?
I'm not sure about the individuals. Our contribution, the districts, went from .55...
To .7.
To .7. And so that is, yeah, .77 actually, I think, is .75.
.75? That's what I thought. And do we know the dollar value, what that's costing us?
I think we actually looked at that at some point earlier, and I'm sorry, I don't have that for you. It's, it's not a huge...
I finally found one, y'all didn't have it. That's awesome.
It is not a huge amount, and we felt like we had that covered already.
On that .75, I think it's just important to know that we're doing an extra contribution. State's doing even less on their contribution to get us caught back up to TRS Care. And are teachers being required, those that enroll in TRS Care, to pay more into the system?
Uh, no.
Did their formulas change at all on what they pay?
No, I don't think that's the case, so.
Okay. And I ask that question because there's always a discussion of balancing out. What happens on, you know, sometimes when we get into compensation, people just look at the salary, and I always say you've got to look at total compensation of what's the total package that's being paid on that.
So I will say retirees are having to pay.
Right, retirees are paying more.
But active employees, no.
Okay. In the formula, they didn't change on what they're contributing to that, correct? Okay.
I believe so. Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to throw you off, but I think we've got to look at total comp, and as we look at our insurance, and, you know, I, I still would ask, I think our benefits committee needs to look, and I don't even know, you know, I work in this industry, but I don't know the official rules of, you know, this insurance is at unlivable wages, just almost putting it as. We're just qualifying over affordable. It's a state-funded plan. Are you looking at, not us, because we're required, and if we don't offer insurance, then we pay a penalty per employee, which is a very expensive $2,000 per employee, whether you take insurance or not. We pay every single employee. Because I know we've talked about, could you not do that and even just offer HRAs for employees to find it on the free market? That's not the option. But I think anything we can do to assist employees, if there's better insurance in the private market, I don't know if there is. Some can do it. I think it also depends on your own personal, insurance is a very personal thing about what type of care your family needs, what level you need, what your costs are. I think those are options that, that we've got to almost consider for our employees because this is a catastrophic area of insurance. And I'm, while I fully agree with the 2.25, 2.25, I still have concerns over not offering their insurance, but I still think that's the right option for this board to do this. Ms. Powell, I hear, and Ms. Walton just briefly touched on it, I hear the, you know, I think it's a good thing you guys are very conservative over projection. What have y'all's numbers been in the past on over projections? Which is what people say. Because I think we asked this last year, and you haven't really been that over projecting each year.
We, we have not. We've been fortunate. We do try to be very careful. We use the word conservative a lot. We also, translates to careful. Where we tend to get savings, big dollar savings are, are two things, and it's not even just savings in the last few years, it's also on the revenue side. Our property values last year went up significantly when we got the certified values from what we had estimated for the original budget. That generated additional dollars for us. On the expenditure sides, it, it varies from year to year. I actually was just looking, so I kind of laughed when you said that. Our variance on the bottom line surplus has ranged as high as a $20 million positive variance over the last five, six years. Where again, we tend to get that, that, that boost, that positive boost, is if property values wind up higher than we anticipate. And then also on payroll, if we have positions that are vacant for maybe an extended period of time, or if we have turnover and maybe someone leaves who's more tenured and they're replaced by someone who has less experience or a lower salary, those things tend to generate savings for us. And so the last few years, if you look at the bottom line, we have been to the good, definitely, have not had a year in a number of years where we came in at a lesser surplus or deficit than, than we anticipated, a worse deficit than we anticipated.
And in all my years, turnover, I think, is a piece on there, electricity sometimes, because say workers' comp spending, we don't use on that sometimes.
Back to the electricity, we've had some mild winters in the last few years, and that helps us tremendously, too. We've been very aggressive with our energy management plans, and even as we've already discussed this evening, procuring electricity when it makes sense to do that. So we try to work it from a number of angles. The biggies, though, are payroll and then utilities.
And, and other little things come in. I think that's just important to note. Every extra, you know, we put a pretty aggressive energy management schedule in place. Every little dollar we save not spending on electricity, we usually end up using it on staff and students. So while some people think those are just feel goods, they're actually things that work to save us money as, as a whole. I commend our, our finance team for being careful on that and working very hard to bring that budget down. You know, as we look at this, you know, we haven't passed a deficit budget since 2010. I think it was the last time, and I commend this board. Anyone who thinks the budget season just happens in June needs to attend some more budget meetings and see what's going on, because this is a year-long process. The budget's a living, breathing, active document, and we make budget amendments throughout the year. I think our board monitors this all year, and I think we must be fiscally very diligent in this year. We're going in, luckily, we've been very savvy with our fund balance, and it allows us this opportunity. We were projecting almost $7 million from the state, six to seven million dollars, I think, is what we're somewhat expecting. And so as we hear political pundits out there talk about effective tax rate, well, that doesn't really work for school districts. State funding goes up, state funding, local funding goes up, state funding goes down.
Absolutely.
But our costs still usually... But our costs still usually are increasing across the board. So the effective tax rate's a nice political mailer you can send out, but it doesn't really work for school districts. So if anyone needs to understand school finance, let me know when you have a month and we can teach you, because it is one of the most complex. And I think, as Mr. Poole said earlier about the Constitution, I think the actual term they said was, "It's lawful but awful," is what the court actually said, stated, which is a little embarrassing for our great state of Texas, that that's how we rule. It's constitutional and lawful but awful as a whole. So I thank you, and I think we've got a budget that I'm comfortable with for this year. Thank you.
Basically, I'd like to make one comment on something you just mentioned, our fund balance. If, with either of these options that we're talking about tonight, we would expect that at the end of the year, if the budget, if our actuals play out just like the budget, our ending fund balance would be right at four months of operating expense.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hogg. Ms. Mace?
Thank you, President Reich. I am 100% for option number two, for the 2.25 salary increase in addition to the 50% for the equity adjustment. But just with accounting being my background, I just feel like I need to say a few things. First of all, as my colleague has said, Bowie stated, the budget does not just start when we start talking about it out here. Thank you, Cindy, and the accounting staff for working on this. Let's see, when we pass this, it'll probably start on next year's, next month?
Pretty close.
It is a very, very long process. Also, no disrespect to Bowie or to Polly for using the words lucky and working magic. I do not believe in either one of those things. What I do believe in is due diligence, and I think that we've seen a lot of the due diligence and really appreciate that, because at the end of the day, the due diligence helps and the fiduciary responsibility also falls on our shoulders to be accountable for what we are going to actually vote on and approve this evening. I always told my boys that George Washington said, and his face is on money, so obviously some people believe things that he said. He said, "We must consult our means rather than our wishes." And as I have looked through the budget and the information that you've been providing us for months, I'm continuing to try to look and see, based on the budget, will we still be able to meet the needs of our students, to make sure that they're successful in the classroom? Will we be able to provide resources and training for our teachers to make sure that they can be the best educators that they can be? And I believe that the budget we have here does that. The AAA ratings that we've had, that's not by accident either. That is because of the conservative approach that we take with the way that we use our money. The difference that I see in the things I want to make sure I put on record for stating to my colleagues is that as we move forward, there's a lot of things that are not as known as they have been to us in the past because of the legislature and the state funding issue. So with that being stated, I just want to make sure that we put a pin to make sure that we begin to have maybe some new conversations moving forward about certain things within our budgets, ways that we, as a board, can look at some of our policies, come up with some ideas, and work with administration as to how we can make sure that with all of the unknowns, worst-case scenario, at the end of the day, it's still our job to make sure that we are teaching our students and making sure they're successful and providing an environment for our teachers to do the same. So with that being said, once again, thank you very much. This is not an easy process. Option number two, I'm 100% for. And once again, the pin to my colleagues, that we sooner than later begin the conversation of some things that we may need to become very much involved in moving forward to make sure that we can continue to do what we're doing with all the financial unknowns. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mace. Ms. Solins?
Thank you, President Reich. Ms. Powell, just have a question on the tax rate. It's my recall for the debt service tax rate, last year went down as well.
It did.
Is that right? So that's something really to think about, that, and I understand the compliance part of that calculation, but the estimated tax rate for 2017, 2018 is down a penny and a half, in addition to a reduction last year. I don't recall the exact amount. I think it's a real demonstration of, you know, our efforts to control costs at debt service and all other places in the budget. So just something to point out, we talk, they talk a lot, we hear a lot about tax rate and yields and so forth, and just as a reminder, that we've had that go down for two years in a row. Ms. Powell, I find that over the years, you're careful planning, and your department's careful planning and budgeting, that your contingencies are very narrow. They really are very narrow for this size of a budget. And now we have new pressure, making a hard job much harder going forward with the legislature and the long-term impact there. So this evening, with these raises and adjustments that I fully support, I think it just gives us a lead time to have more discussions, because as we know, the budget cycle for next season probably begins with our vote this evening on this one, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solins. I don't see any other lights at this time, but I do have a question, Ms. Powell, and I agree with everything that my colleagues have stated. One of the things that you mentioned that we know on the special session agenda is that $1,000, whether it be that or anything else by the Texas Legislature, if we take action this evening, do we need to include language in a motion to cover that that includes anything from our Texas Legislature? I know it might not be your realm, and I don't know if that would be a legal counsel question. We just want to make sure that we don't put you and your staff and the district in further jeopardy if they do actually take action in this special session.
I think I will let our counsel, Dr. Akabam, address that question.
Thank you, President. The answer is, it depends on what the legislation actually says. If they say that whatever has been passed, you have to add this in, then we may be putting ourselves having to add that afterwards. If you were to include language that says inclusive of anything the legislature does, then that would include it, unless whatever they do is greater than the raise that we've given, and then we'd have to come back and add that only.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification, and I, so I would urge, if there is a motion to be made, to take that into consideration upon making a motion. I don't see any further lights. Ms. Walton, you indicated that you were interested in a motion. I see you leaning here. Okay.
I move, we approve our budget for 2017, '18 with the proviso that the raise is inclusive if the state comes back with anything in August, end of July, whenever, that might affect our budget at that point.
And can you clarify which option?
Oh, option two, I'm sorry, the 2.2 salary increase and the equity adjustment of 50%.
2.25?
I'm sorry, 2.25. It's been a long day. And equity adjustment at 50%.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Hogg, for approval of budget recommendation of a 2.2, that includes a 2.25 salary compensation adjustment and the 50% option. So option two, that is also inclusive of any raise mandated by the Texas Legislature. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. We have our budget. Thank you. Moving on, discussion action item B, Consider Tasby Policy Update 108 and Board Policies, BDAA Local and FMG Local. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we bring for discussion a policy update 108 and the policies you mentioned. The Board Governance Committee has had several opportunities to review these, and so tonight, it's a discussion action. And so Mr. Hill has a brief presentation.
So thank you, President Reich and Board Members, Dr. Cavassos. We're here to discuss the policies from Update 108, which we recently received. Again, there's several recent changes in both state and federal laws that are included in Update 108. Just as a reminder, and well-known, there's the legal updates of the law, we don't have any say into that. And the local updates, they do need board approval to adopt, repeal, or revise policy. Just a standard in our process, administration, including the Board Governance Committee, our counsel, and the appropriate staff members have reviewed the legal and the local policy changes and how they impact our work. We've tweaked some of the local changes and sent those back to Tasby for a review, and they're in support of what we've given with regard to what we're recommending. In Update 108, there are 33 legal policies. There are seven local policies and four exhibits that are impacted by the update. Just a smaller, the actual policies there by code and the two local policies that are not a part of Update 108, but administration and/or the board are bringing for consideration. Just a closer look at some of the policy revisions in Update 108. I'll call out just a few. EF Local, talking about instruction materials, that's being moved from EF to, moved to EF from EFA, and that's better to align with instructional materials and resources. One of the other ones I'll call attention to, GKB Local, which says that the district shall not accept political advertising paid or un, well, the actual update says paid, but our administration said that we just take the paid part out and say that the district does not accept political advertising, period. And that came from recommendation from Update 108. BDAA is a policy where we're bringing, where we're recommending that the, remove the position of the Assistant Secretary from the Board of Trustees officers, and I think we had some discussion about that in a meeting previous. FMG allows a superintendent or designate, or to designate a staff member to approve in-state overnight trips, and that's not a part of Update 108, but that kind of helps us better do our operations here locally, within the district. Some of the legal policies, DHB specifies and clarifies a requirement for the superintendent to report employees to ESPEC for improper educator relationships with students or minors. Again, that's just one of the legal policies, just clarification in there. And another one, FOC, regarding student discipline, it updates the list of Title V felonies as it relates to the Penal Code. There are many other changes in the legal policy update at 108 that simply relocate policies for better alignment or delete policies because they are referenced in other places. This is a smaller one of the updates, but we're here, and so administration recommends the board approve the policies presented in Update 108 and BDAA and FMG Local with the discussed revisions. And again, the Governance Committee has had an opportunity to review these, and will definitely take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Reich. Mr. Hill, don't say this is one of the smaller ones. You're cursing us on the next one.
Well, it's coming. It's right after session, so.
I know. You don't, don't say it. It's karma, Mr. Hill. I feel like we just were doing Update 103 not too long ago, and we're doing lots of updates, and they keep coming back. Let me thank the Governance Committee, Dr. Reich and Ms. Hudson, for all the work on these updates, and myself, as we went through this, with Mr. Hill and staff. Mr. Hill, thank you for y'all's diligence on updating those. I know, you know, we get a review and determine if we like them. Y'all have to determine what they actually do and how they impact and make the changes. So I appreciate this. As Mr. Hill so eloquently stated and went through some of these reviews, this was a condensed, let's use it as that, version of what some of the changes are. A fair amount of legal changes, which as we know, we don't have much say in legal. We always want to make sure our locals are correlating with those. I think for this board to be able to soak these in and review more, and as Ms. Hudson asked earlier, our items, you know, she's asked in previous, are all these items online for anyone to review on policies? Because we have lots of policies. There's a lot out there, and I'll be the first to admit, sometimes a policy comes up, and it's like, I thought I'd read all policies, till I've read that one in this district. So you learn something new every day, so I commend Tasby and Mr. Hill and our staff for helping us keep these policies updated on the work on these. It is, I think this alone, I tell people, I think we pay $10,000 a year, or something like that, to Tasby for dues, and this is all included in those dues. I think it's worth every penny that we're paying, not in addition to all the other items we're receiving from our state association, to be able to provide assistance to all the districts across the state for all these update policies. So as we look at this, for the public to review, and also my colleagues on this board to review, unless someone has a real change of heart, I would probably say, I'd like to take action on this in the next meeting, just to give people time to review as a policy standpoint. Because unfortunately, sometimes policies, I'd rather take a little more time for people to review them, getting them passed, because once they get passed, they sometimes aren't reviewed for a while, just being very fully transparent on where it comes. So with that, I don't plan to make a motion unless someone else on this board does.
Mr. Hogg? I see no lights indicating as such, so I think that indicates we will be talking about this at a further meeting. Thank you.
And Dr. Reich, just to note, I mean, I'll let you and Dr. Cavassos, but I would, you said a further meeting. I would intend possibly the 29th, if that works on our agenda that y'all are building, unless something else works. I give it the leeway to you guys, but that's, that would be hopefully my intent, unless we need to tweak it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on, next item, and thank you, Mr. Hill. Next item is items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Any trustees have desires to withdraw items? Seeing no lights, move, let's move on to the consent items. Tonight, we'll be considering the items listed under consent on our agenda. Ms. Powell, do you have some bids to share with us?
Yes, Dr. Reich, board members, Dr. Cavassos. We have 12 bids on the agenda this evening, and in all cases, administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have donations for your consideration this evening, totaling $133,534, which brings our year-to-date total to $959,712.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Hudson, a second for Ms. Mace to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Consent agenda passes. We have no items under discussion. The next item is the open forum for non-agenda items. I do not have any cards. Is that correct, Ms. Benjamin? All right, well, we will move on. Dr. Cavassos, superintendent's report?
No report.
No report. Moving on to school board members, any trustees have something they wish to report? Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, Dr. Reich, real quick, the only thing I'd point out, we brought it up the last board meeting this Saturday, they will be having a memorial service for, I guess, Seaman Coke, I think is officially his title, who was killed in World War II, and they discovered his remains. That will be at 1:00 PM at First United Methodist Church with, I think, a nice attendance and large crowd. I had full intention to plan, and I'm disappointed, but my wife informed me, she told me she was going out of town on Saturday, and I have two children, and I don't think they want two babies at the ceremony. So I'd ask, if any of my colleagues go, it'd be nice, and if not, I appreciate the city of Arlington, First United, and everyone honoring this AHS grad from 19, I don't remember exactly what year he graduated, right during the war to start, so, and then went off. So I appreciate all the work. Richard Acquamalia in our historical side, he's done to bring him back.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. I see no other lights from trustees. Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, President Reich. One item Bowie requested was that Dr. Barlow send us a copy of the year-to-year comparisons from the self-evaluation.
Very good. It is 8:47. It is 8:47, this meeting's adjourned.